At this time, I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order. And, uh... At this time, I'd like to lead us in prayer, so if you'll join me in prayer. Almighty and ever-living God, source of all wisdom and understanding, be present with those who take counsel for the renewal and admission of your church. Teach us in all things to seek first your honor and glory. Guide us to perceive what is right, and grant us both the courage to pursue it and the grace to accomplishment of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, this time, we're gonna take a couple of items out of order without objection. If there's no objection, we'll go first to... Item seventeen. Consideration of possible action to approve a resolution authorizing and implementing an economic development program agreement with Heart of Christmas LLC pursuant to Chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code. Actually, we'll need to go... We'll have to go to Citizen Communication and input first. So, we'll do that first. Go back to Citizen Communication. Input?
Uh, Jesús Mendoza. The mayor is going to call Mr. Mendoza.
Mr. Mendoza, I'm gonna put you on speaker, and you'll be on Citizen Communications, okay? I'll let you know when we can start, yes. Go ahead, Mr. Mendoza.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jesús Mendoza, and this is the root cause of suicide on emergency responders. I have been homebound for more than seven years with life-threatening electrohypersensitivity, EHS. Exposure to the same wireless micro radiation reaching police officers at work causes me, among other things, symptoms of heart attack and stroke. My EHS has been recognized by federal and state agencies and by courts as a physical medical condition and as a disability, and proves conclusively that the micro radiation reaching police officers at work causes severe physical harm and disabilities. Exposure to power levels of radiation above the federal safety limits causes harm even to healthy and strong adults, and the cell phones and other wireless devices used by police officers emit radiation above the federal safety limits. Chronic exposure to radiation increases by more than 150 percent risk of suicide. Out of 55 police officers that routinely use wireless devices on their laps, 53 suffered testicular cancer and some had to be castrated. Police officers are being exposed to the same radiation that causes EHS in brain, high blood, nerve, heart, and DNA damage, even to the children of police officers, and to the same radiation that breaks the brain-blood barrier to allow toxins into the bloodstream, including painkillers, to enter and damage the brain, which in turn can cause anxiety, depression, aggressiveness, and impairment of judgment in emergencies. This radiation has caused firefighters' symptoms of brain damage, including confusion, inability to focus, brain fog, and depression. Most doctors are in the dark or in denial in continued misdiagnosis, mismedicated, and mistreating the symptoms of this harm. Officers with suicidal tendencies keep them to themselves for fear of losing their gun, their job, and even their license.
Mr. Rattner?
To make things worse, nobody's protecting our police officers from the harm being caused on exposure to it, to radiation.
Hey, Mr. Mendoza, we're gonna have to ask you to wrap it up in about 20 seconds.
Mr. Mendoza, you have 15 seconds to finish your statement, sir.
Okay. Using the same medicating technologies used by the Secret Service, measuring officers' exposure to radiation, and drug examinations by doctors with expertise in electrosensitivity. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you telling me we have his written statement, and we appreciate his input.
The mayor says we have his written statement, sir. Is that he who you're over?
All right. Next.
The other one is Colleen Mitchell.
Okay. If you've signed up for Citizen Communication and the city secretary calls your name, please come forward, state your name, and give us your residence address.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Colleen Mitchell. I live at 822 Patton Ave. I'm here about the rezoning of the area by Sun Valley Shopping Center in between Washington and Patton Ave Street. I before have appeared before y'all, and I tend to talk too much, so, and go over my two minutes. I have put in a petition, and I have gone around my neighborhood and gotten signatures on their feelings of this rezoning. I would make copies for each one of y'all that I would like to present to you. Also, thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
We have Tara Premier.
Tara, you're here for the...
The mayor.
For the 380. That's coming up next?
I signed up today.
Okay.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's it, ma'am.
Mayor, I signed.
All right. Okay.
Robert, yes, I'm sorry. Robert Lethwich.
All right. Please approach the podium.
I'm sorry. Robert Lethwich, 909 East Parkwood, Harlingen, Texas. I just wanted to say that we needed some clarification from the City Commission. We, you know, we just went through this 12 percent tax increase. There was some narrative that was being repeated often and frequent from, you know, Commissioner Leal, Commissioner Mesmer, yourself, Mayor Boswell, that this tax increase was nine or 10 percent. It was only gonna be $40 per $100,000 valuation on the house. Well, it turns out, it's a 12 percent increase, and I think that's kinda deceiving when the increase is a lot larger than what you were proposing to the residents and the taxpayers of the city of Harlingen. I don't know if it's incompetence because people weren't studying, you know, the numbers, or they were just trying to deceive the voters into making them think that it was less than it was. But the next thing I want to talk about is the city manager's evaluation tonight. I just wanted to let Dan... And I want you to know this is nothing personal, but the fact is, is that we just had a 12 percent increase in the property tax for the citizens of Harlingen. We've still got flood victims. We've still... We've got a group of flood victims that are here tonight that are still having to deal with those floods. And folks, if you haven't got your flood insurance premiums yet, get ready, because if you've claimed anything on your repairs due to the flood, you're gonna get a large premium increase. I've already talked to several people around the city that have. I just wanted to say that if we see the same kind of city manager pay increase that we've seen over the last few years, which frankly has been an embarrassment for the community because of the size of it and the fact that the community has a 35 percent population that falls within the poverty level, we don't need to be paying big money for an administration when we have the problems that we have and we can't afford to keep our taxes down.
All right. All right. That concludes our Citizen Communication input. So, we're gonna go to item 17, which is consideration of possible action to approve a resolution authorizing and implementing an economic development program agreement with Heart of Christmas LLC pursuant to Chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code.
Mayor Commissioners, the Heart of Christmas LLC, and Tara is here. They are wanting to film a movie in Harlingen. They are wanting to utilize some of our facilities, and so we think it's a great opportunity to market our city. It's a wonderful opportunity to showcase their movie in an outstanding backdrop, which is Harlingen. And so, we're asking for a resolution to execute a 380 agreement, to authorize me to execute a 380 agreement, that would give them up to $5,000 of reimbursement for stays in hotels or meals upon receive a receipt of purchases and receipts.
Are they filming now?
I'm sorry?
Are they filming now?
No, they're filming right now, sir. Only, not Tara. The other cameras.
This is my good...
And they... Now, their obligation would be to stay in Harlingen hotels for at least 22 days, and I know that some of the filming has already started and some are right away, but the use of the... Some of our facilities for some of these scenes is something we want to bring back through a 380 agreement, and I am definitely recommending approval. And Tara is here. She is the producer of the movie, and if you'd like to say anything, Tara?
Hello. And first of all, we did start filming today, and the city has been absolutely amazing. We don't even have treatment like this in Los Angeles. So, as the producer of the film, my deepest appreciation to the city for doing this for us. The biggest thing I want to say is, from what we've experienced so far, we would love to keep coming back here. Our actors are incredibly happy. Melissa Milano, Christian De La Fuente, and Angel Parker, they love everybody here. They're here with open arms. So, I wouldn't see this as a one-time event. I would see it as a multi-event. And my executive producer, Alan Napier, is from this area. Executive producer means he's put money into this feature, and he doesn't want this to continue as, okay, we're here just once, just because the film calls for it. We are here to come back quite a few times and build a small, little film business here in the city of Harlingen in the valley.
It's actually entirely funded by citizens of the valley.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
Mainly doctors and people that serve the people here on a daily basis, and we will continue doing that, and Harlingen's really stepped up, and we would love to give back.
Well, as a matter of fact, in the agreement, it also stipulates that they would give the city of Harlingen, using our logo, credit in the movie.
Well, we've actually done it in press, and when Christian arrived yesterday, he did mention the city of Harlingen in a Telemundo interview, so it's already starting.
So, staff is recommending approval.
I have a bunch of questions.
Sure.
So, I'm here on the internet. Heart of Christmas Farms, Florida. Is that you?
No, no, no.
There's a Heart of Christmas Farms LLC. Heart of Christmas a musical? Facebook page? No, that's Christmas Florida. Heart of Christmas Movies, UPTV? No. So, who are you? Where are you from? What do you do? What's your experience? And what is this film?
Individually or as a company?
All of the above.
Um, well, this isn't...
Google Andrew Schirrmann. Google Andrew Schirrmann. He's a social producer.
Actually, Google me, too. Both of our IMDB pages. Between the... Both of us, we've been in this business for 50-plus years. Andrew is Oscar nominated. I am Emmy nominated. Heart of... Heart of Christmas LLC is a vehicle that we incorporated just for this film, as most film businesses do. As it's a separate entity, it has its own insurance. It has its own contracts with all the actors and the vendors, so it's not necessarily this, you know, company that... It's only for this one film. Future Sight Entertainment, which is my company, S-I-G-H-T, is the umbrella company for Heart of Christmas LLC.
And what is this movie about?
It is about a young girl who loses her mother. She is an American citizen. The mother is an illegal alien, and there is an ice raid during Christmas, and she is separated from her mother. And she runs into this woman who lost her family a few years ago during Christmas, on Christmas Day, due to a tragic car accident. So, both are broken-hearted, both through finding each other, find hope and love again.
What network is it gonna err on?
Right now, we're going through our sales agents to find the best fit. We've discussed everything from a limited theatrical release with a screening here in Harlingen and around the country, all the way to possibly just selling it out to Netflix. And we're gonna... You know, as a producer, I... There is a business side to this. I have a responsibility to my investors to get the best deal possible, but we also did this film to bring, you know, to try to reach the broadest audience that we can, and that is our home. We don't want it to be buried somewhere. So, that is what we are going through right now with our sales agents, which could possibly be voltage pictures, and you can look them up as well. Also, Melissa Milano's agency, CAA Creative Arts Agency, has also offered to come on board.
And your full name, please?
Tara Pirnia. Tara Pirnia.
Spell that. Thank you.
Sure.
Is this kinda like a Christian movie, kind of?
Um, there are elements of church in it, but I wouldn't say it's a faith-based movie, no. There is God. There is Christmas. There is all of that. It is truly a Christmas film. Yes.
All right.
What if you need any extras?
We do.
All good-looking men.
Courthouse, tomorrow.
Hair down, hair up. All the same.
All right.
Careful.
Well, we already have a place for everybody. If you wanna be in the courthouse scene, shooting at, what is it, 10:00 AM tomorrow? Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the 380 agreement?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Sure.
All those members say aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming to Harlingen.
Yay!
We're excited to see a movie being shot in our city, so...
Do you mind if we go back to set? Do you mind if we go back to set?
Please go back. Go back and work on the movie.
Can you sign?
Sure. Thank you very much.
I gotta bid somebody. Right there.
You are somebody, sir.
With my chance.
I was a contender.
All right. Then we're gonna go first. Okay. Item 16. Consideration of possible action to approve the rental rates for the Harlingen Convention
Mayor, Members of the Commission, as part of the agreement that the city has with BC Lynn, the city approves the rental rates for the convention center. They are proposing some changes. Here to make that presentation is Jeff Hamel with the BC Lynn Corporation.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Hamel, General Manager for the Harlingen Convention Center. Here this evening to propose the new rental rates for the fiscal year of 2019 and 2020. The total ballroom price is going up from $5,700 to $6,000, which is a $300 increase Ballroom D and E, which is the primary two-center ballrooms, are going up from $1,500 each to $2,500 each. Our Dove Suite, which was added as a meeting room rental space, is now at $200 and will be sold to primary corporate meetings and conferences. Our service charge went up from 1 percent to... It went up 1 percent to a total of 24 percent service charge. In addition, and I wanted to start out in saying first, going back and saying, you know, right now, we have the Burning Festival, the RGV Burning Festival, that has been in Harlingen for 25-plus years, and this is the first year we're having it, and it's turned out to be a great success, and everybody seems very pleasantly happy there at the convention center today. Also, in October, we exceeded our top line revenue by $15,000 in the new fiscal year budget. So, the first month, I mean, we're trending ahead to budget. Also, to note that while these rental rates are posted, that we have to have leeway in negotiating these rates with clients. Rental rates may be very... Rental rates may vary based off from other services booked and type of business. Two examples of that would be long-term business on need dates, association business that brings room rights and food and beverage to the city of Harlingen. Also, going back to long-term business, i.e. like a church group that just booked with us for next year for 52 weekends on a need date, which Sundays are primarily need dates. And so, we're just asking for that leeway to be able to negotiate, because for an example, if somebody books, say, $30,000 in food and beverage with us, we want to have that ability to negotiate these rates as a management company. Does anybody have any questions about the rate increases?
On the 24 percent service charge?
Yes, sir.
Is that a shared charge? Like, is that partial stays with the house and then some with employees, or...
The service charge is... It goes to the profitability line, but also that gets split out. 14.4 percent gets split to the house.
Okay. So, there's a house tip built into it?
Yes, and that covers all operational costs of the convention center.
Right.
It helps cover that cost.
Right. I just wanna make sure.
Jeff?
Yes.
You mentioned the 5,500 to 6,000, and the 1,500 to 2,500, and the Dove Suite is now available and wasn't available before?
Well, this year, it came out, and we identified the price for that.
Okay.
Because it did not have a price adjustment based off from the square feet. We felt... And all of these prices are very marketable and comparable to what our competitive set is, which is the South Padre Island Convention Center, the McAllen Convention Center, and the Corpus Christi Convention Center.
Correct. And so, I just wanted to mention, you did not mention the King Fisher and the Oreo, that it went up from 350 to 400, according to my notes.
Okay. So, I was showing in that meeting room rental, this year, we have that staying at $200 rate for each room, because there's a total... If you break it down into the many rooms, it's $200 per room.
Okay.
And then $400 for the entire Oreo room, or $400 for the King Fisher room.
But that was an increase, correct?
Uh, no, that was not an increase.
It was not? Okay. My notes show that it was an old rate, new rate.
Okay. And on the original marketing plan that we have provided to the city, that's where I was pulling on from those original rates.
Correct. From.
May I ask a question? This is more to Dan. Maybe you have it. How does giving in flexibility on certain rates differ from how we're restricted, either from the golf course or from the other things that we run that we set rates for?
We have an agreement with them for the operation of the convention center, and at the golf course and all the other facilities, we run those internally.
Oh, so it's a different...
So, under the agreement, we set the rates. The city council sets the rate, but the flexibility is included in the agreement itself.
Okay.
Which is... You see it on one of the pages through the agreement.
I see.
And they have to have that flexibility in order to sell and market the convention center.
That's one of the benefits of having...
Private sector.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, and I just wanted to make a mention. I don't know if everybody read the paper, but we landed the graduation ceremony for UTRGV.
Yes, we did.
Because our center is larger than another center in a competing city.
Absolutely.
And so, I thought that would at least mention that.
Yeah, that was fantastic.
That's great. Great news.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the rental rates?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed to like sign. All right. We'll go back to the Burning Festival.
All right. Thanks so much.
Take care of the birders.
Thank you, sir.
They're spending lots of money in town.
Yes.
Okay. We'll go back to the beginning of the agenda, and the first item on the agenda, item number one, is the proclamation of November 7th through 9th, and 14th through 16th, and 21st through 23rd, 2019, as Harlingen Professional Firefighters Local Fill the Boot Days. Invite our firefighters to come on up, present a proclamation. Whereas the Harlingen Professional Firefighters are the prime example of public service and sacrifice, displaying the nobility to protect the citizens of our community every day. And whereas the Harlingen Professional Firefighter members are highly dedicated and trained individuals who demonstrate American ideals, the ultimate standard of character and courage in the face of danger. And whereas the city of Harlingen and Harlingen Professional Firefighter members selflessly contribute their time and energy fighting for kids and adults with muscular dystrophy, ALS, and related life-threatening diseases that severely limit muscle strength and mobility for filling the boot each year with a muscular dystrophy situation. And whereas in the past five years, the city of Harlingen and the Harlingen Professional Firefighters have raised more than $165,000 for NDA through the annual Fill the Boot campaign. And whereas the city of Harlingen and the Harlingen Professional Firefighters and the service to NDA has given so much hope, families fighting life-threatening muscle diseases, now therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim November 7th through the 9th, November 14th through 16th, November 21st through 23rd, 2019, as Harlingen Professional Firefighters Local Fill the Boot Days, and I congratulate our...
German.
Whoever gets in. I want to congratulate firefighters for giving of themselves this way. It's really an inspiration to everyone, and as a true mark of the great things that our city has accomplished, and we really appreciate you representing our city so well in this charitable contribution. So, would you like to say anything?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We just want to say thank you to the citizens of Harlingen, the city of Harlingen, and the fire department, and the NDA Association for helping us with this cause, and we have a very generous community, and it's not without the help of the citizens and their giving spirit that this is possible. So, we appreciate everybody being considerate of us being out there with traffic and everything, and we're just very thankful and grateful for this opportunity.
And would you like to say something?
Sure. Yes, of course. Thank you again to the city of Harlingen. Every year, you guys continue to be our number-one supporters for fill the boot down here locally in the RGV. So, again, something to be very proud of. We're very excited every year to partner with the city of Harlingen and the firefighter department. You know, the strides that they have been taking through the money that they've raised have done a lot for our families locally and nationally. Money within the last five years that's been collected, we're lucky that we've been seeing with NDA that we've actually approved five E drugs in the last five years, which is something that hasn't happened in a really long time. So, very excited. Really good things happening for a lot of our families, including a lot of them who reside here in Harlingen. We actually had a family was gonna try to come out today, but they actually had to go up to Houston to get their shot that they get. It's called Spinraza, and that was one of the drugs that was approved. And we wouldn't have been able to approve that without the money for research, without the efforts of the fire department and the city of Harlingen. So, that's such a huge thing, you know? That dollar that you're putting in the boot every year is literally saving lives. So, thank you guys so much for that every year.
He's gonna take our picture, so...
There you go. There you go.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you all. Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Item two is the long-awaited presentation by Rodrigo Davila, Public Works Director, regarding duties and functions of the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mayor.
Two minutes, right?
Start the clap. I'm already at this point. Thank you, Mayor. Yes. Here we go. So, this is the Public Works, and this is just the departments that fall on their public works, and I'll be talking about each one in brief in a little bit. So, we have sanitation, brush and breathe, landfill, fleet maintenance, vehicle depreciation, which is also known as internal services for us, traffic signals, street light maintenance, and the engineering department. We have a total of 105 employees within the public works. We have an operating budget of $20.3 million and a revenue budget for $11.59,000. And so, what does public works do? In a nutshell, we maintain and improve the city's infrastructure to include streets, alleys, drainage improvement systems, city vehicles and equipments, amongst others. We own and operate our solid waste collection departments, so we collect our solid... We own and operate our solid waste collection departments, so we collect our solid waste, our brush and debris through the transfer station, and our recycling set. Unfortunately, they took this one a little bit too early, but this is a, what I think is a great picture of our crew, dedicated men that come in at early hours and start the day. Our sanitation department is made up of nineteen employees, and we provide solid waste collections and services to eighteen thousand one hundred and forty-four residents who receive service twice a week, two thousand six hundred and thirty-seven commercial and twenty-one industrial customers who can receive services up to seven times a week. We've collected, received, processed, transported, and disposed fifty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy tons from the three customers mentioned above, and we've all transported those to the Edinburgh Regional Landfill. We've addressed two thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine residential and commercial sanitation reports. And this is just some of the amenities that we have close to our transfer station, some of our equipment and our incinerator when we do our brush. In our brush and debris department, which is made up of twenty employees, we've collected and processed, received eight thousand six hundred and seventy-four tons of brush, seventeen thousand seven tons of debris, and eight thousand two hundred and thirty tires just in, just last year alone. And just as a note there on the bottom, the June twenty-fourth event, to the date of this presentation, because we're still collecting for them, but we've collected two thousand three hundred and forty-seven tons of brush and debris combined, and we're still working with the residents as they call in to keep those. Our transfer station, which has been rebuilt twice, but this is a picture of a current transfer station, landfill department, which is made up of thirteen employees, and through this transfer station, we've transported and disposed of seventy-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-two tons of solid waste, debris, and ash all to the Edinburgh landfill. Our recycling center, that's just some of the materials that they collect and handle, which is made up of four employees, they have collected and processed and sold nine hundred and sixty-eight tons of recyclable materials totaling in sixty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. They have collected, they have used the services, service hours of two thousand five hundred and seventy-five community service through the Cameron County Adult Probation, the Harlingen Municipal Court, and volunteers such as MMA, TSTC, and high school students. We continue to work with Harlingen School Districts implementing recycling programs, providing tours for various school groups, visit campuses to educate students and teachers, parents, on the importance of recycling. To date, they've worked with twenty-four schools and three district offices to collect recyclable materials. Our fleet maintenance, you can see one of our operators there, is made up of four employees and a total of two thousand six hundred and forty-six work orders were processed, generating three hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-six in revenues, and the work orders vary from repairs to tire repairs, replacement of hydraulic systems, engines, and transmissions. We provide fleet services to all five hundred and one city vehicles and equipment, and we're in the process of providing new software, updating our software to help us diagnose and repair our heavy-duty vehicles. Our vehicle depreciation, which is also known as internal services, with four employees, we maintain, prepare, and renew paperwork for said five hundred and one vehicles, and within our city database, we prepare documentation for fifteen equipment purchases for city departments, and we maintain and update the depreciation worksheet, which is a tool to determine when a vehicle is due for replacement. We're not going to go into details, but that's basically how it goes.
Can you go line by line?
I can, sir, but thank you, sir, for saying no. Our traffic signal department is also made up of four employees, and we've coordinated with AAP to have two hundred LED lights installed along Tyler and Harrison Avenue between Expressway and Business Seventy-Seven, and we're anticipating an additional two hundred to continue from Business Seventy-Seven to the north. Some of our guys, we've conducted eighteen traffic studies for the engineering department and reported four hundred and eighty-seven streetlights to AAP in Magic Valley for repairs. This is the streetlight map that shows, I apologize, I should have done it a little bit closer so you could see more detail, but in my screen it looks pretty... Our street department, which is made up of thirty employees, and here we show kind of like an inventory of what we have and we maintain, which is two hundred and sixty-three centerline miles of paved city streets, fifty centerline miles of paved state roads, eight point five miles of unpaved roads, sixty-seven centerline miles of alleys, sixteen of them are paved, a hundred and thirteen miles of sidewalks, a hundred and twenty-seven miles of storm sewer lines, and thirteen miles of open drain ditches. We've repaired nine hundred and fifty-four potholes throughout the city. We've repaired a thousand five hundred and fifty-four square yards of pavement due to cuts that are done by utility companies. We've graded a hundred and fourteen thousand linear feet to improve alleys. We've cleaned in form of excavating thirty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-five linear feet of open drain ditches, and we have mowed four hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven linear feet of open drain ditches amongst the eighteen drainages that we currently maintain, and we are adding more this year as that continues our efforts to keep those clean. We have flushed out three hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and eight linear feet of stormwater sewer lines. We've installed or replaced a hundred and forty-nine street name signs, two hundred and nine regulatory signs, and a hundred and thirty-seven warning signs. Our three sweepers have swept four thousand six hundred and eighty-one miles of city streets, and we've repainted the striping on seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-two linear feet of roads, and a total of one thousand four hundred and fourteen linear feet of pedestrian crosswalks were replaced with thermoplastic markings. And that's just our equipment and our guys at work driving around, and we'd like to see them at work for the engineering portion of this presentation. I'm going to ask Andy to come over here and speak about the engineering.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Andy Biggsall, I'm your city engineer. Our department falls under the Public Works umbrella. There are five employees, including myself, I have an assistant, I have two technicians, and I have an inspector. Last year, we had seventy-two subdivision reviews and seventy-one commercial reviews, three hundred and sixty inspections performed throughout the year, four sidewalk construction improvement projects, twenty-four roadway, street overlay improvement projects, and twelve drainage improvement projects. So this is our general fund project for this year. These streets were approved, they would have been last year, and most of these are nearing completion. Here's a map of the streets. So from two thousand and five to current, we have repaved almost two hundred and six lane miles of streets, which is pretty impressive feat. Last year's sidewalk construction projects included, the main one was a grant from the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council, and we also had one from Community Development Block Grant. The location of the sidewalk projects are laid out here on this map. Our drainage improvement projects, this is a slide that we've added to the website to assist citizens in addressing where we're at with our drainage projects. So, we're really focused on drainage right now, if you guys hadn't heard. It's a big issue, so we're doing what we can to leverage as much with the grant monies available so that we get our biggest bang for our buck. From two thousand and eight to present, this is just kind of a summary of our drainage projects, and right now we have two ongoing projects, which are the Thirteenth Street Ditch and Jefferson Drainage Ditch, which will be being repaired here hopefully soon. So we had a master drainage study in two thousand and eight, and that is the basis for most of our plans for our drainage projects right now. We're currently in the process of updating that, and we're utilizing the UTRGV Senior Design Class to aid in that, and that's really a beneficial project. Here's the study map from the two thousand and eight master drainage study. There's breakouts of different areas. The IBWC is another component of the drainage scheme. They have a fairly wide-ranging authority when it comes to the Oreo, which is our main output for drainage here, so we are continually working with them to see what we can do to improve things on the Oreo. So, their main goal, from what I'm gathering, is not so much on the drainage portion, but rather to regulate the international boundary between the United States and Mexico. So, they've got kind of a, maybe a different set of goals than we do, so we're trying to find where we line up and where we can come together. And that's the end of my presentation. Lilly will present the remaining slides.
Well, they're tag team.
It's called delegating them.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner. The City of Harlingen hosted the second annual TPWA RGV branch, second Equipment Rodeo held October twenty-sixth at the Bass Pro Shop Parking Lot. The rodeo consisted of a friendly competition amongst fellow colleagues, coworkers, to show off their skills in the backhoe and the grappler. There were a total of twenty-one participants for both events, and I am proud to announce that out of those twenty-one participants, two of our employees placed second and third place in the grapple event, and we look forward for next year's competition, which will be held in Edinburgh. Thank you.
That concludes our presentation, we can answer any questions that you may have.
Very good. Do I have any questions? Well, I think it's great to have the departments come and share this information with us and with the general public in this meeting, because it really reminds us of the hard work that our city staff does each and every day, day in and day out, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, trying to keep our city in tip-top shape and providing the services that our citizens expect, and certainly that was a great report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item three is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September eighteen, 2019. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
You have a correction. On page two, line twenty-nine, please to correct the spelling of Commissioner Puente.
I think it's line thirty-nine.
No, thirty-nine, yes.
Any other addition?
Huh?
Any other additions or corrections? With that correction, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Next is the consent agenda, items four A through H, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. I'm going to skip to item eight, consideration of possible action to amend the contract with Loews and Fishes to provide meals for the homeless and needy through their kitchen and food pantry, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Okay?
Mayor, at the last meeting where the contract for Loews and Fishes was approved, Bill Reagan asked if we would reconsider allocating an additional twenty-five thousand dollars to his organization. The city manager asked that we put this on the agenda, and he's going to make a budget amendment to cover this, so we're asking that you approve the item to grant an additional twenty-five thousand dollars to Loews and Fishes for their meal program. Bill Reagan is here, if you have any questions for him.
So, Dan, we have the money to do this?
We're going to have to amend the budget, but we can start making the payments monthly, and we're going to bring back a budget amendment anyway in February, so we'll correct that down.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Is this what there are people here on, there are a bunch of people here on this, let's skip over, well, let's do Rolando.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, thank you, Bill, for all you do for our community.
Thank you, Bill.
Item five is consideration of appropriate action, if any, to retain the services of Attorney Rolando Rios and Associates in connection with the 2020 census and the related redistricting process.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is kind of coming from legal here, we're recommending that we hire Mr. Rolando Rios and his firm to handle the census, the 2020 census data and the related redistricting. The city hired them last time we had this, and so he's here to just kind of generally explain what y'all are going to do, and there's an agreement in your packet that we have already reviewed and approved, so to retain his services.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak to you. The Constitution of the United States requires that every ten years, the federal government count every person in the United States for two reasons, because the census account ends up allocating two important resources, political power and federal funds. For example, in two thousand and ten, Texas gained four new congressional districts. California lost two, New York lost one. So that's one important function of the census. The second one is federal funds. Medicare, Medicaid, aid to families with dependent children are all based on an accurate count of the census. About two point, twenty-five hundred dollars per person over a ten-year period is what the community gets for every person counted, so it's real important that we get behind the census and make sure that everybody gets counted. It's a three-step process, we're in the process right now, I'm doing the redistricting for the Cameron and Hidalgo County, and this year we had an issue with the insertion of a citizenship question in the census form. We were able to successfully defeat that because the citizenship question would have compromised accuracy, which is the most important thing that the census does. It's a three-step process, once we get the, right now what we're doing is we're submitting the shape files of the various city limits and shape files for the county voting precincts, et cetera, for the census to get ready to take the census. Then when we get the census, we evaluate your districts, give you a report, and then prepare plans for you to review and approve, just like we did in two thousand and two thousand and ten, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So this is just one of those necessary things?
And staff has recommended approval and authorization to the city manager to execute the agreement.
Is there a motion to approve the agreement?
Motion to approve.
I just have, there is a cap, right, or protection on the amount of money they're spending, or that you can oversee, right?
Right, so far, we're expecting to spend approximately thirty thousand, and that'll come out of Legals Fund, so we're, you know, you're either going to pay him or you're going to pay us, so it's approximately thirty thousand.
Okay, but if it goes beyond that, you'll modify it, or does it...
They would have to get approved.
Yes.
Won't go beyond, won't go beyond.
It won't go, yeah. So he's on record as saying it won't not.
We need a second, seconds.
Well, yeah, okay, we have a motion to second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rios. Okay, items, we're going to go to item seven, because I think we have some folks in the audience that want to get to this item. Consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential single-family R1 district to residential multifamily M2 district for lot three, Sun Valley Shopping Center. for Lot 3, Sun Valley Shopping Center Unit Number Two, save and accept 30 feet by 58.33 feet, located at the west side of 11th Street, north of Washington Avenue.
Community Mayor and Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from residential single-family to residential multifamily to allow for a multifamily development on the subject property. This is a subject property. You can see it's on the west side of 11th.
Hang on, hang on a second. We need to, the item was tabled, so we need to.
Motion to remove from table?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
I can see the property is located on the west side of 11th Street, just north of Washington Avenue. From aerial view, the subject property has about 100 feet of frontage on 11th Street and a depth about 698 feet at its longest point. As you can see on the aerial view, there's a lift station on the northwest side of the property. Of course, the area you can see is generally developed with single-family homes on the north side. The south side, you have a mixture of single-family, multifamily. Of course, to the east, you have the Sun Valley Plaza and of course, to the west is the library area. This is the street view of the project. You're looking at it from the west side, which is actually the rear of the property. Again, you can see the lift station, which is adjacent to the property. And of course, this is a view from 11th Street, which is the front of the property. Future land use shows this area as a low-density residential. Although it's not consistent with the future land use plan, it is consistent with the multifamily zoning that you have to the south of the property as well as the multifamily use of apartment complexes south of the subject property. Public hearing was conducted by the, by, at the meeting and there was concerns expressed by the property owners concerning the impact the development would have on the drainage system. There was also concerns about the impact it would have on the sewer system or wastewater system, as well as concerns about the potential increase in the odor in the lift station. I'll take, staff and PNZ are recommending approval. I'll take any questions on the item. The Hardage Water Works General Manager is also present to give a presentation on the wastewater system in the area. And the applicant is also present for any questions.
I think when we tabled it, we had a question about whether, you had a concern about the sewer, right?
Yes.
I'll let you take over.
I was able to meet with the owner who lives behind the lift station and I met with the director. And he said that there are some plans in, I guess, in the future for some remediation. There was even talk about moving the lift station where it's at now to a different location. If you wanna, I'll let the director kind of look to.
Sure. Good afternoon. I think I'm gonna advance this if I can. If I would get to, this is the overall view of the area. This location here, and this is the subject property. Lift Station 19 is in that location. It receives flow from Lift Station 22, 18, and 21. So it's, it, it's a fairly large lift station in terms of the waterworks. There have been flows that have been diverted away from that lift station over the years. So the lines leading up to that lift station certainly have sufficient capacity. That lift station does not present a concern if we're talking 20 additional apartment units. That, that does not present any issue for the capacity of this lift station. I have outlined some areas in yellow along those pipelines. The lift station really isn't deep enough for all those lines to be as free draining as we would want them to be. It's been functional. This is the way it was designed many decades ago. About 10 years ago, there was a rehabilitation that was done, a different style of pumping system placed. It is my understanding from our staff that the calls and the odor issues associated with that lift station dropped after that period of time. There have been a few. We certainly do encourage the public, whenever there is an odor concern, please call us. It's not always apparent to us when an odor situation does occur, so we do rely on our customers and citizens to tell us when that issue exists. The, the lift station, really, the wet well needs to be deeper for that area to be free draining. We're going through a master plan process right now to look at broad water and wastewater conveyance issues. This is one of those that I think very, very clearly will become a project identified on our master plan. I can't say exactly at one point in time we would look at relocating that, we would make it deeper. That would bring some improvement to the odor issue that's been experienced in that location. There are some other things that were pointed out when meeting onsite with Commissioner Puente. And one of the residents there pointed out an issue, and we're gonna be addressing that starting this week. I've already undertaken another improvement to address some of the immediate concerns with the odor. Long-term, though, capacity-wise, odor-wise, it is not, in the opinion of the waterworks, that the proposed development creates an issue from the sewer and wastewater side.
Sir, I have a question. That was brought to the attention of the board that there is an underground drainage canal. Were you aware of that or is that?
That is, that, and I don't have all the details on that particular issue.
The resident admitted it in 1942, so I think they remember when it got covered.
Right. And I don't question any of that. My understanding is, is that that was a canal system that used to drain to Town Lake. And Town Lake was, was bigger. And so it had been reduced in size. The library was built, cultural, the cultural center there as well. And it's my understanding that there was an open canal that fed that reservoir. Currently, that canal obviously has been covered over and all water that is conveyed to that reservoir is through a different route. It does not go through that location any longer. In terms of the geotechnical, what's under there, what was abandoned, I can't speak to that. I do believe that was the case.
So on your map, the yellow-red, that is sewage line?
So every, every green line, every red line that you see on this map represents a gravity sewer line.
Okay.
And yellow represents a degree of the areas that are affected by the lift station not being deep enough. And so there is some, what we call surcharging. Those lines surcharge a little bit. That doesn't mean that they're overflowing or backing up. It just means that there's an impact associated with the depth of that lift station that can be remedied when we replace that. And so that is the project that we would like to undertake.
Okay, so there is a sewage line under this property in question, correct?
It actually, I do not have a blow-up here. There is a, an unpaved, I guess you would call it an alley, on the north side. And sewer line that passes through there is on the north side of that alley. And then it comes back down, joins the other line from the north, right at the intersection of that alley and 9th Street.
And what is the size diameter of that sewage?
All the lines in, in yellow there are 18-inch and that is more than enough to convey whatever flows in that area.
And any construction on this property, can there be construction without building over the sewage line or piercing the sewage line or compromising the sewage line in any manner?
I do not believe so. I think all of those lines lie off of the project, off of the property that would be proposed for rezoning.
So if I understand correctly, sir, you're saying it, there is a problem. It may not be a real big problem in your opinion, but there's an issue?
Yes.
And you also can't give when it'll be fixed?
It will be, that.
But you can't say it'll be a year from now, five years from now, 10 years from now?
I would, I would hope that we could address this much sooner than later, much sooner than 10 years. It might be a year out. There are a number of lift stations where, many decades ago, they were built with a certain style. Standards have changed. We would like to upgrade not just this lift station, but a number of them, so that they are more free draining. I think there can be some, some odor generation improvement if, when we replace that. But as I said, we're taking immediate steps to address some of the complaints that were raised in.
So I would, I would put myself in the position of the citizen saying, they built it. It does exactly what they thought it was gonna do and it creates a bigger problem. And now they have to live with a worse problem for the next however many years.
In terms of the 20 units here, there is so much flow coming to that lift station. Adding 20 units is really a drop in the bucket. It really doesn't have any impact on the capacity of that lift station. That lift station can indeed move all the flow out of there and it does do that. The depth issue is not directly related to that. I think the depth issue has more to do with potential for odor generation and we can address that.
And as far as flooding, as far as the sewer line, storm drains, are they sufficient in that? Because I think they also mentioned that they had issues with, when, every time it rains, they're having issues with cars passing by or water getting into the houses or.
Well, the storm drainage system, I'm not that familiar with. That, that's one of the areas of the Public Works and Engineering Department. So we, we do know that a lot of areas in this part of town have vitrified clay sewer pipe. And it's not that, it can leak, it can allow infiltration in. So when there are storms, we start to see that in, in the form of stormwater combined with wastewater. And I'm, I, I think this area would be one of those where that happens. We are undertaking efforts to rehabilitate manholes and to replace the lids with a composite cover that's got a gasket. And over time, as that process continues, we're going to get to a position where we, I think, significantly reduce the inflow, infiltration that comes into our lines. The immediate steps that we're taking adjacent to this lift station will do that. And I think there will be odor, odor control improvements that are gonna be realized immediately. I can't really say. Odor is a difficult thing to quantify. I do think deepening that lift station, although I can't quantify it, I think will be a positive benefit to this area.
And when you say odor, you're talking hydrogen sulfide?
And, and there's some other mercaptans and other exotics.
You remember passing by my junk.
So if for any reason this does not pass the zoning, so they're not gonna build apartments, you're still gonna proceed with the, that's what I'm, none of this is hinged on this happening. You're, you're all gonna work towards the odor control no matter what happens.
Absolutely. I, in my mind, those are unrelated.
I, I guess I have a question for either Carlos or Rodrigo on drainage. Can you tell us about the drainage system in those, in this neighborhood? And where, you know, where are the drains? What size? Does it back up? Do we have any data or statistics?
Before he answers that, just, you know, we've had conversations about it barely rains and it floods. And is this one of, so to answer him, is this one of those areas?
It is one of the areas not, I mean, I, I'm not gonna go and say this specific location and stuff, but in the general area, we have experienced some of that. We are looking to run the, the camera through them, continue to clean them, continue to work with residents. As far as the water standing and just vehicles driving by and creating that wake, I mean, there's not, there's not much we can do about that, vehicles. For some reason, some people like to drive fast when it's wet. And I don't know what enjoyment they get out of it, but that's, that's generally what happens. In, in the past few rains that we've had in this area, because I, I do live close by here, up here, we've experienced where it, it drains. I know that when there was a lot of construction, we experienced some, some dirt that went in there. Since then, we've asked the contractor and we have been cleaning some of that. So we're continually working on this issue, but I don't have enough information to answer your question.
So have cameras, snakes and cameras gone through the drainage systems? See if there's roots or collapse or any of that sort?
Yes, sir. I, I don't have the video. I can, I can get that for you at a later time. I don't have it with me right now.
And it's clean, it's clear?
Whatever is, is clean, we, we record as clean. Whatever has any blockage or some, we take measures to, you know, to remediate that.
So this area has been worked on?
I know that the area directly behind the mall has. I don't know if we have done this one already, but I can tell you that it is on the schedule to be done and I can provide an update if you'd like.
Has there been any sort of an assessment of what an M2 project, how an M2 project might affect drainage? Any, any assessment of how an M2 project might affect drainage and the impact drainage in the area?
We haven't done that assessment, Mayor, specifically, but.
Residents are concerned that if there's, if there's an apartment building built there that, that's gonna drain onto them and it's going to, it's gonna negatively impact their property. So can you, can you address that issue?
Sure. So during the building permit process, the, the developer, the would have a required, you have a drainage study done and minimize the impact of that development into the system itself overall. So that will be addressed through either detention onsite and, and to minimize that impact into the existing system. I did wanna add, though, that there is a, a drainage project that we have submitted for funding that alleviates some of this area of the system under the, under the TDM or Texas Department of Emergency Management. It addresses this system that runs along 7th or 6th Street, nearby the library, up to the Austin area and it branches out into this, this general area.
Carlos, what's the, what's the size of that lot? Or what's the size of that again?
The drainage?
The property?
Oh, I'm not fully familiar with the property size.
Okay, so 100 feet by 600, maybe? If, if they have to put a retention, or retention pond or something like that, that's gonna reduce the buildable space that they're, along with the easements and stuff that are done, right?
So the way they, they accomplish that typically is through the grading of the lot itself. And it's meant, again, based on the current drainage policies, they, they detain a five-year storm. So through the grading and some of the side swells within the property itself, parking lot area and so forth, they're, they're typically able to, to, to address those needs or those requirements.
Okay, so just like any other housing, the street becomes part of the drainage system?
Yes.
In this case, the parking lot would become part of the drainage system?
If designed properly, that's, that's correct.
Mr. Rebe said was, so there is no dedicated land for a deep retention bond of any sort?
I would assume not, again, not being familiar with the design, what the footprint of the building would be. If it's gonna be two, three stories high, we're talking about 20 units. The footprint is, is gonna dictate how, how much runoff it creates. And then, again, the, the developer's engineer would be in charge of designing a system or grading the lot to, to, to address those, those needs.
And those are submitted during the development process with the permit, through the subdivision process? So all those things are submitted at that time and reviewed. That's why we don't have that information at this time.
And so when they apply for the permit, they're gonna have a parking lot. And so because they're gonna have a parking lot, they're gonna have impervious covering.
Run-on.
And so then they're gonna have to have a, a study that shows that we now have covered X amount of land and this is what happens to the water because it no longer can percolate. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
A drainage study.
A drainage study, but that's done independently of the city. The city does not do that. They have to hire an engineer.
They hire an engineer and they, they complete a drainage study. That drainage study then submitted to our engineering department for review.
Correct.
And concurrents, whether or not our engineer feels that the information is adequate or whether we need additional information, he'll let them know at that time through comments. And they have to address those comments.
Well, my, my concern is, is we have a number of residents in that area that are concerned with the project. We have a waterworks system that knows, that has, has improvements that need to be made along with the city then. Whether we have future plans for a drainage, it's not, it's not happening right this manner. It's not gonna happen long term. And again, I think if we add to a pond and push that onto the citizen, they're the ones that have to deal with that for the next four or five years or whatever it is, until we, we have adequate improvements that need to be made. So I'm not comfortable with, no.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and call for the reading of the caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential single-family R1 District to residential multifamily M2 District for Lot 2, Sun Valley Shopping Center Subdivision, Unit Number 2, save and accept 30 feet by 58.33 feet, located on the west side of 11th Street, north of Washington Avenue, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Okay, is there, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Is this one where they have to deny, where they need to vote against it or?
If you're attempting to deny, it would be a supermajority, but yes, there would be a motion.
Yeah. Well, we were told it doesn't require a supermajority. That's what Javier told us last time. Do we just have to vote and it's a majority vote, not a supermajority? That's what we were instructed the last time.
What do you recommend?
I would recommend a supermajority.
We can just single vote. I vote nay.
No, well, first you have to make a motion.
I like the motion that we deny.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
And this is, your motion was to deny this request?
The rezoning request.
Rezoning request.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any, any other discussion? Is there any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, the rezoning request is denied.
Denied.
All right. I'm going to save the conference report to the end. I'm going to come back to item six. Item nine, consideration possible action to adopt a resolution authorizes city manager to execute in advance funding agreement with Texas Department of Transportation for sidewalk improvements under the statewide curb ramp program.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This request is for a sidewalk improvement project. On September 17th, 2017, we received notification from TechDOT that our sidewalk improvement project under the request was being approved for funding. However, the funding would come through TechDOT's statewide curb ramp and pedestrian improvement program. Since that date, TechDOT has moved forward with the, preparing the engineering design and construction documents. These documents are approximately 90% complete, and TechDOT is getting prepared to begin the bid solicitation process within the next 60 to 90 days. The attached resolution authorizes the city manager to execute the advanced funding agreement with TechDOT, which commits the City of Harlingen to a fixed funding amount of $85,551 towards the three sidewalk improvement projects. The projects are Tyler and Harrison from Dixieland to F Street, Business 77 from Washington to Loop 499, and IH 69E from Wayland to FM 2994. So I'm just going to kind of go over these real quick. The total project cost is $4,461,629.80. And again, our contribution is $85,551. It's very, they're a pretty big stretch as a sidewalk. They're going to fill some significant gaps in our, in our sidewalks here, here in Harlingen. Harrison and Tyler, they're going to go from, from Commerce to Dixieland. And then Sunshine Strip is going from Washington to Loop 499. And on the Frontage Road, it's going from Wayland to FM 2994. So these are very large projects. TechDOT has the consultant at the 90% level. Again, we have a relatively small fixed amount for the, for the percentage of the, of the project, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
You said Commerce, it's not F Street?
It is F Street. My mistake.
Just want to make sure what didn't change.
And so this is a pretty good use of eighty-some thousand dollars by the city?
Nice trade.
I believe so.
I would, I would say so, yes, sir. I would say yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, this is a great, great project.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Item 10, consideration possible action to accept or deny the donation of five park benches to the city parks from the Harlogins Wellness Coalition, a nonprofit organization to be installed at the Meg Jordan Trail. Javier?
Yes, sir, Mayor, City Commission. We have a donation request, I guess, from the Harlogins Wellness Coalition. They want to donate five benches to, to the city with the condition that we install them on the Meg Jordan Trail. And so, they'll be identical to the, to the benches that are there that will be installed with TechDOT when we did the trail. And they'll have plaques on them, so they'll be able to put, you know, they're dedicated or by whoever. But staff recommends approval.
Is there a motion to accept the donation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 11, consideration of possible action to approve a contract between the City of Harlingen and Cynthia Sparks to provide infant swimming resources, comprehensive drowning prevention instruction at Pendleton Park Pool, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Yes, Mayor, City Commission. The, Ms. Sparks approached the city little, little over a month ago, and so we presented this item to the Park Advisory Board on September 17th, and the Park Advisory Board recommended approving the contract with Ms. Sparks. And it'll be a standard contract, which she'll be making payments to the city for $200 a month. And the, the term of the agreement would be January 1st and run through April 30th, 2020. And she'll be using Pendleton Pool.
Motion for approval.
Second.
She's going to pay us, and then she'll, she's going to be charging or?
That's correct, yeah. So she'll be charging, and then she'll just pay us.
And we won't be running any of the funds through the city?
No, no, sir.
All correct?
Right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item 12, consideration of possible action to enter into a contract with Kone Inc. utilizing the U.S. Communities Program in lieu of bid to support RFPs for the replacement of parts and repairs to the staff elevator or passenger elevator at the Harlingen Library and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Yes, Mayor, City Commission. We would like to request approval for this contract with Kone Inc. And so, the amount is $168,200, and this is to repair the elevators at the Harlingen Library. The elevators are pretty old, and so the money was budgeted and approved in the 2020 budget. And so, we would like to use Kone through the U.S. Community Program in lieu of bids. Kone is a contractor that we've been using throughout the city currently to maintain our, our elevators throughout the city, and staff recommends approval. If we do approve it, there is, there are some changes to the contract that I would like to make an announcement on, and I did pass out those changes to you.
Sir, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Are there several people that do this kind of work, or?
There are, I think there's two companies that do this, and Kone is one of them that we, of course, we've used.
Well, I guess my question is, there's not people in the valley, or some of the where you can't put it out for bid? Because I always feel that if you put it out for bid, I don't know how much money you can save, because it usually costs what it costs, but are you able to leverage that? And?
You know, we could. We'd have to, we'd have to prepare a scope of work and put it out for bid. The bid probably takes about a month.
It's quite a bit of money. I find this company's out of the valley or wherever. I just don't know. I don't know how many people do this, right? But I always thought that...
The answer is, it's a very small number. Kone is headquartered in Finland. They're a global company. Otis Elevators is a part of stock symbol, UTX, United Technologies, and they're going to sell that off shortly.
So there's not, but there's not anybody locally that does that, or?
So is this the brand, so Kone is the brand of the elevator, not just a company that does service to elevators? Is that, is that, to be understood?
Yeah, because it would be taken or maintained or doing it.
Yeah, I didn't even think about that, but when Michael, when you said that it's a...
It's a small universe.
But I'm saying, it's, they're a manufacturer of elevators, like Otis is?
There's about three or four of them here in the valley.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they, if they manufacture, I know that they do maintain them, and they do repairs.
And we're using them because they're on the bid board, they're unapproved.
They're approved vendor.
Doesn't require the bid process.
Correct. And one, one other thing, go ahead.
I'm sorry, but if we're just, we're not replacing, we're kind of fixing, right? It needs repairs.
Correct.
I would imagine there's local people or local companies that have certified people, they go to school, do that kind of stuff, and companies that maintain elevators. I don't know how many else, maybe few.
No, it's all international and national businesses that do this.
I know there's a locally owned business that's in the business of installing, installing and doing elevator repairs. I just don't know enough about it to, to answer it. I, I do know we have one in town.
And, and we haven't had to do this kind of work in a while. I mean, would it be a bad idea just to put it out? Can we just not put it out for bid?
Well, one of the things that we, we were pushed up against the wall because we've had issues with the elevator, it's gone out. The public has gotten stuck in there. We've had to call them to come out and, you know, open it, repair it. The staff elevator is completely out right now, so there is a, a sense of urgency to...
Right, but if you could save 20,000, 10,000?
But this company's on the buy board.
Yes.
Which guarantees...
These are state-approved purchases, bids.
Right.
So, the, the reason we utilize them is to expedite certain repairs. In this case, the elevators, that's a critical component for compliance with the ADA requirements. And one elevator's out, it's not working, the other one is giving us all sorts of fits. We need to get them operational as quickly as possible. So that's one of the reasons we're going this route.
And on the ADA side, especially the public one?
Absolutely.
Especially the public one.
And so, so we're recommending approval so we can move forward.
I think your, I think your, your question is about, is a good one.
Yes.
And I think in the future, we should, we should look around, because we do have some local companies. I know that there are other companies that service elevators on the island, at the courthouse, for example, but this is also an issue that potentially is a safety issue, and I would err, I would err on moving forward as fast as we can. So, is there a motion to approve this agreement?
So I'm moved.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item 13, consideration possible action...
The changes to the contract, the changes to the contract is on page 16. Legal has asked that we strike out the indemnification. The customer agrees to indemnify and hold Kone harmless for any claim of bodily injury, including death, tinglement, property damage in connection with the use or operation of the equipment. We struck that out on the contract. Also on...
Item 12, you struck? Item 12, you struck?
Not the entire thing, but just one, one sentence.
Okay.
The one I read right now, and the one that you all have is the clean version.
This is the clean version.
The one I handed out, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, and then so, on page 18, under governing law and dispute resolution, legal has asked that we strike out where the project is located in that, in that paragraph. Those are the only two changes that they have.
Does this need a vote to accept these changes?
Yes, you need to, yes.
I'm in the motion.
So the motion needs to be amended?
Well, so let's call, I'll, I'll call for another vote and just ask that, who made the motion?
Commissioner.
Okay, will you accept the amendment? Will you accept the?
I accept the change, the modify, I'll modify my, my motion to accept the changes made to the, the contract.
Okay, and who made the second?
I did.
And so will you accept, will the second accept the changes to the motion?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so now we'll, we'll vote again. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item 13, consideration possible action to approve the renewal of the service agreement between the City of Harlingen and Motorola Solutions to continue preventative maintenance and service to radio equipment at the New Hampshire Lipskin Tower site, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Misses Terlant. This is a three-year term agreement in the amount of $66,458.66 over the course of three year, three years, to continue to provide ongoing maintenance and service for the existing tower site equipment, including additional repeaters that have been added over the years due to the interoperability growth with the City of Harlingen. And staff recommends approval.
All right, is there, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I just had a question. So this is not the same agreement that we, when we bought the radios. This is a maintenance agreement.
This is a maintenance agreement.
For the towers.
For the tower.
I just wanted to make sure, because I, I asked earlier, and I, and all of a sudden it dawned on me, this is not for the radios themselves, but the tower. Very good, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item 14, consideration possible action to approve a mutual aid agreement between the Harlingen Police Department Special Weapons and Tactics Unit and the Cameron County Special Weapons and Tactics Unit, and authorize the mayor, commissioner, city attorney to sign a mutual aid agreement. She?
Mayor, Commissioners, this is a mutual aid agreement, similar to one we had in the past, but it's been in excess of 15 years since the last one I could find. And it just updates the agreement and makes it a little easier for us to help each other out, and that's, that's basically what the agreement's about. It does require that all of you have to sign, as well as myself.
A motion for an approval, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item 15, consideration possible action to approve a resolution amending Resolution Number of R 1531 to remove Section 3. Any board member of the board who fails to attend three consecutive regular meetings automatically forfeits such position. Gabe?
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. The DID board voted to have this particular section in the resolution stricken that calls for a board member to be removed if they miss three consecutive meetings. Staff is also recommending that we do that in the resolution. There's no legal requirement for having that in it, the state statute, so we'd like to have it stricken from the resolution.
So I'm moved.
Second.
I have a question, but is this the, are they having a hard time making meetings?
Oh, no, no. There's, it's a 12-member board, but there are some that cannot attend regularly, and because the board membership is made up of 50% of the area in the DID, we cannot lose any of these members, because then it'll drop us below the requirement.
Oh, because they're restricted.
Yes, sir. That's, that's why.
Yeah, I've always said, I've always said they're kind of, they're there because they own the property.
Right, okay, understood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Did we vote?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. All right, we're going to go back then to item six, presentation on the City of Harlingen's Comprehensive Plan Report. That will be from our special project director, Mr. Hoel Garza. Welcome, Hoel.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Commissioner.
You have five minutes.
City Manager, I'll be brief. I have about 132 slides, so. These were derived correctly from the Comprehensive Plan, so there were 18 priorities listed in that, and so it's just a quick update on what has been completed since the 2016 completion date. And so obviously, Convention Center was number one, that has been completed. They had about 66 different events in last fiscal year, and so far as of October 25th, they have an estimated 88 different events. The Hilton Garden Inn is underway, as you can see, the construction is going along smoothly. Priority number two was the Baxter Building. This morning, we did the ribbon cutting, and so all 24 units have been leased, and most of them are occupied. And so we do, I did include the, the picture from this morning. Priority number three was the overlay on Commerce. There is a portion that was completed, there's a portion that's underway now. We still, we still have two pending phases that we hope to get completed through the RGV MPO in the future. The destination part, thanks to the 4B and Representative Longoria with his generous earmark of a million dollars, we're going to get this started construction soon. Priority five, allow and encourage mixed use. This is currently in the general retail, allows the, the mixed use, and so there was no need for a new zone. Priority six with the downtown parking needs, in-house, they did a study and looked at all the, the surrounding parkings, and so that equaled to close 2,225 parking spaces. So even now with the Baxter building up, we haven't received any major complaints as far as parking. Priority seven was the drainage, and so since 2008, with the drainage master plan and the hazard mitigation action plan, there have been several projects from 2018 to 2014, were total about 13 million. And then moving forward, we, they have completed through Public Works, Beckham Road, Alton Palmas, Lake Drive, Sub-Siwar Project, Big Lane, and so I have a quick pictures of the work that Public Works staff is currently being done. This was a project through FEMA that the city was able to receive close to over a million dollars in federal money. So that will soon be starting up. This right here. And then because of partnerships through the Cameron County Drainage District, number five, and Hardwood Navigation, number one, wherever to do 13th Street Drainage and Dixieland Drainage. Here. And then grants that the Engineering Department and Public Works have applied for, we hope to hear something from TIDAM and FEMA soon. Priority number eight, Fire Department, I am working closely with the Fire Department to identify some funding resources for this. So far, we don't have anything identified, but we'll bring that back once we do. Priority number nine was the renovation of the City Hall, and so for the ones that don't remember this, what does it used to look like? And so this is now, and the same with the chamber, executive chambers, and then now. Priority 10 was the All-Inclusive Playground with the partnership with the grant of Val u Bat's Legacy Foundation and the Harlogin School District, wherever to secure three All-Inclusive Playground at 1.3 million, so at Victor, Long City Hill, and Hilton Park. Priority 11, Harlogin Arts and Heritage Museum, they've done extensive work over there between Phase One and Phase Two. And so so far, these were pictures taken about two, three weeks ago. They hope to have the finalized venue open February 2020. Soccer Complex, priority number 12, although we don't have identified funding sources for what is proposed, I did include areas that currently were lacking, and so I know the Parks and Rec Department have done a tremendous job of upkeeping the current field that we have, although this is what it looks like about a month ago. Transportation Infrastructure, priority number 13, through the RGV MPO, the Spur 54 is being constructed, does it now. If you drive through there, it is a little congestion, but it will be completed hopefully in the next 11 months, and so by September of next year. So far, completion date, or percentage is 28% as of October 1st. FM 509, it is a project north of here, but it is a project that will help alleviate some traffic in the area. It is spearheaded by the CCRMA. Funding has been identified. They do have to go through their process as far as environmental engineering, right away in design. Priority 13 was a bike and pit plan, through the legacy HSVMPO, they did a regional master plan that identified several projects throughout the area, and still, to date, we still use this master plan to apply for various grants. Multimodal through the RGV MPO and Federal Transit Administration has identified $6.5 million for the construction of a new multimodal facility in the area. And so just as an FYI, this is not, this is just a concept that was used in the Edinburgh. Just to get to you, this is a smaller version from the Bronzo and the McKelvey. Priority 14 was the marketing of the Aerotropolis, and so the EDC staff have done a tremendous job attending various conferences, meetings, events, and laying out defro, marketing materials, and producing a wonderful video that highlights the benefits of the area. Priority 15 was the library, and so the chair in the library was upgraded thanks to a grant by the Texas State Library. And the teen library was created thanks to partnership with the Junior League of Harlogin and the Bogus Ford family. Priority 16, Hugh Ramsey Nature Park Education Center. Currently, we're still in the process of identifying a funding source. We applied to two different opportunities. We haven't been to Texas for it this time, but we'll continue at it. Priority 17, Ramsey McKelvey and 25th Street Trail. Again, both of these have not, have been identified any funding sources, but we'll continue to make our best effort and apply for more grants. The one we do have is the Arroyo Trail extension from the Arroyo Trail where Bogus Ford is at to Dixieland, and so that has been funded through the Valu Bat's Legacy Foundation. And I know something that is, I'm sorry, this is the trail. This was not part of the priority projects, but it was a good thing to note from this morning, and so today there was a groundbreaking for the new UTRGB, UTRG Health Neuro Institute for Neuroscience. And so I type.
You cut me out.
So Hoel did a great job of putting this together. We wanted to report back on the priorities from the Comprehensive Plan. The staff has done an outstanding job of meeting those priorities and getting these done, pursuing grant opportunities where they are available. So I applaud them for all their efforts and the hard work, and we're just gonna keep going.
Well, you know, I was kidding when I said five minutes, but you did it in like six. Congratulations, that was, that was a very efficient presentation, but also a very satisfying presentation to see how we have achieved an incredible number of our objectives from the Comprehensive Plan and the priorities that we set a few years ago. We're not just working on one thing at a time, we're working on everything at once, and that's fantastic. Congratulations to everyone for their hard work to accomplish that, and thank you for that report.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Item 18 is board appointments. Are there any board appointments? Board appointments? All right, I have none, so we're gonna go now to item 19, which is executive closed session on the following items. A, personnel liberation percent, Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, number eight, appointment, employment evaluation assignment, or duties of the city auditor, and B, the city manager. C, attorney consultation percent to Section 551.071 and 2, Texas Government Code, receive legal advice regarding pending litigation under Chapter 19, Texas Civil Practice and Remedies Code, between Texas State Technical College and the City of Harlogin to clear title to ownership to certain real property located along Loop 499, and TSTC is purchaser and City of Harlogin seller. D, attorney consultation percent to 551.0712, Texas Government Code, secure legal advice and counsel, obtaining the city's rights, dues, and privileges and obligations under Convention Center lease and operation agreement, and the Working Capital Fund contemplated therein, and related legal issues. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, we'll be meeting in executive session to discuss personnel matters and to meet with our city attorney. There could be action on items when we return. Item 20, consideration of possible actions discussed in executive session regarding item 19, the city manager, and I'd like to take this opportunity at this time to recognize our city manager, Dan Serna, for the outstanding job that he is doing as our city manager, and feel like he has accomplished the objectives and the goals that the city commission has set for him, and led the staff in a superlative manner, and that we appreciate the hard work that he's done this year. Can I just say anything?
I can echo that. I just, like I told you when we talked in the back, I'm super happy that you're at the helm of the city. Your heart is there, and I just, my, you make it easy to be a commissioner, because I can call you, you're responsive to all emails, I don't have, there's never delay. So I really thank you for being at the helm. It's really important.
Appreciate that. Appreciate everything you do for the citizens of Harlogin and the city. You've done a real good job this past year, so I really appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ditto.
Ditto twice.
I was gonna give you a hug, but...
The camera's rolling.
All right, is there a motion to take the action as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, item 21, consideration of possible actions discussed in executive session regarding item 19B. That would be city auditor's evaluation. We also want to express our appreciation and confidence in Danny Coyle's service as our city auditor, and tell you that you've done an excellent job, and we're very, very pleased with the work that you have done for us as the city auditor. Ditto.
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 Gonna give you a hug.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to take the action as approved?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 22, consideration of action authorizing legal counsel to represent the City of Harlogin, Texas, in consideration of legal proceeding under Chapter 19, Texas Civil Practice and Remedies Code, between Texas State Technical College and the City of Harlogin to clear title to ownership of certain real property located along Loop 499 and related legal matters. Is there a motion to authorize legal counsel to take the action?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. And finally, item 23, consideration of appropriate action to authorize the city manager to determine and pay the required payments from the Working Capital Fund to B.C. Convention Center specified in the Convention Center lease and operation agreement. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.